Oh yeah.
It looks like a bunch of sunflowers, but it's weird. The other thing is.
Oh, that mustard we threw in there too.
Well, this thistle came in and killed all the stuff, but it's taken over even from that. The other thing is I want to talk about, as your PB obviously likes, but there's a reporter that wants to talk about it. And I don't know if you guys would like it. She's got some pretty detailed questions.
Okay.
I don't want to weigh in, right?
Right. My best guess to have just in case.
So Joe Juan is her name.
Okay.
I can't remember who the organization, but I might just send her over to you. She's also interested in talking about, or talking, you know, talking with people who are, who are like an athlete. Maybe you know something you can send her to.
Sure.
The other thing is the old City Hall property. I talked to Elizabeth a little bit and I know that like you showed some interest.
There's been two or three people showing some interest now.
They're parked back there. It has a different time. It says it's Monday still.
Is this Tuesday?
Okay.
Call may need to order at five o'clock sharp.
Okay, this is the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. And we do have one speaker for closed session, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Ms. Martin, and this is closed session, item B.
Good evening, Council, City Manager, City Attorney and staff. So tonight in closed session, the council has a settlement offer to consider in the Martin versus City of San Clemente. I've made a very fair and reasonable settlement. I even offered to meet in closed session with you to address any concerns or questions you have. But oddly, hoping to resolve this tonight, but oddly, that was, that offer was not being accepted. I am still available should you wish to do so. Anyway, nonetheless, I hope the city moves forward, gets this case settled. I think it's in the best interest for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public election to join to closed session. All right. Any objections? No. Seeing hearing none, let's go to closed session.
Go ahead, we're going to call the meeting to order. Clerk, you want to?
Yes, calling the regular business meeting of September 3rd, 2024 to order. Thank you.
If we have a roll.
And we have the invocation given by Assistant Pastor Steve Pascoe with Calvary Chapel San Clemente. And follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for being here. Stand if you can.
Father God, we thank you that you know all of the issues that are being dealt with here today in advance. We thank you that your word reveals you as being the almighty God of justice and righteousness, but also a God of love and equity and grace and forgiveness and mercy. We thank you for this beautiful city. And we thank you for these who have committed to fulfilling their responsibilities to support the community in this council. And we pray for your protection of them and their families. I pray that you would give them wisdom as your word reveals that true wisdom only comes from you. And I pray that you would give them a sense of righteousness and unity. That their desire would be to bless this community as it is your desire, Father, to bless this community. We thank you for each one who's here and pray that you would fill their hearts with the peace of God that is in this place. And that your peace would reign and rule in this city. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you for that. We have two young men that are going to come up here and start us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You can come up the podium. Yeah, right there is fine. Yeah. Just, everybody will just start. Put your hands over your heart and go ahead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation, where your God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right.
Okay, and we will note for the record that all council members are present.
Yes.
And first item on the agenda is City of San Clemente Blue City Certification. We have a presentation by Ashley Pries with the Chief City Liaison with Blue City Network in recognition of the City of San Clemente being named a Certified Blue City Tier Two Ocean Champion for its commitment to healthy waterways and oceans.
All right, so.
Come on up.
We're going to have a presentation now with extraordinary news. The designation of San Clemente as a Certified Blue City. And here to present that honor is Ashley Pries?
Pries, yes.
Yes, from the Blue City Network. All right.
I speak into this microphone?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you Mayor Cabral, City Manager Hall, and distinguished members of the City Council. I am excited to be here today to celebrate San Clemente becoming the newest Certified Blue City. The Blue City Network is a certification system that recognizes cities and counties demonstrating a commitment to healthy oceans and waterways. San Clemente joins a growing community of 12 other cities in California, including Encinitas, Slana Beach, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Malibu, Santa Monica, and Santa Cruz. As part of the network, San Clemente will continue collaborating with other cities and counties and receive support from a network of nonprofit partners to help San Clemente further develop programs that protect the marine environment. San Clemente impressively scored 350 out of 500 points on the certification assessment, placing them in the Ocean Champion tier. The certification process involves completing a detailed assessment form that evaluates the city's current and ongoing environmental initiatives and programs. The assessment is divided into four solution areas, which are Waste Minimization, Climate Protection, and Community Resilience, Water Quality and Efficiency, and Healthy Ecosystem. We use a data-driven approach to assess each county's progress in marine environmental protections. Achieving Blue City Certification allows communities to credibly and transparently track their progress towards overall sustainability objectives. I'd like to point out a few of the accomplishments that assisted San Clemente in gaining Blue City recognition. These accomplishments include identification and protection of both marine and land resources within the city's coastal land use plan, stacked incentives piloted with County of Orange and a local HOA association to facilitate a turf removal, drip irrigation, drought tolerant planting project coupled with a stormwater retention basin on HOA property to support the HOA's contribution to both stormwater pollution reduction and to water use efficiency, and developing a coastal resiliency plan that builds upon the findings and recommendations contained in the city's 2019 Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment. This coastal resiliency plan outlines a range of actions, projects, and adaptation strategies for improving long-term resiliency in the city. Through their certification status, San Clemente serves as a model to other cities able to assist other towns and cities looking to advance their environmental initiatives through our program. Lastly, I would like to recognize Dana McKintosh, Courtney Farrell, and Nikki Beach, who led the certification process towards San Clemente's Blue City Certification. On behalf of myself and the team at Project O, congratulations again, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I do have a. Yeah.
We'll put this there somewhere. Thank you very much. All right. Give this to the clerk.
Yes.
Water polo game?
Yes.
All right, I guess you can all come down because we're going to start a presentation.
Next item on the agenda is San Clemente Water Polo Club Junior Olympics Medalists. This is a presentation of commendation of the San Clemente Water Polo Club Junior Olympics Medalists in recognition of the 10 U Boys Team winning the gold medal and 10 U Girls Team winning the silver medal for the Junior Olympics.
All right, do you have your spokesperson that can? The coach normally? Or we'll call on the youngest. Words for the audience, just stand up here.
Talk on the mic?
Tell us what the awards were.
So, good evening, everyone. I just came from the high school. We just played a water polo game. We beat Huntington Beach 13-11, so. I had to change my shirt. I was all sweaty and so excuse the appearance here. Just want to say congratulations to the 10 U Boys and Girls. We're so excited about the future of San Clemente Water Polo and extremely proud of the athletes and the families. And, you know, we're blessed to be part of this beautiful city and this beautiful community. And, you know, being at the top is where I think we deserve to be. So I'm super excited for the future and congrats on the present. We won the national championship for Junior Olympics at the boys' level and we're second place for the girls. So congratulations, everybody. Thank you, city.
Let's start with the boys and the girls. Let's start with the girls.
Yeah, girls, come on up, girls.
Is that the goalkeeper?
I think she's the secret weapon.
Exactly. Never see her coming.
Here, we'll let you, well, we'll let the members of the, there we go. City Council here can give a couple each.
Yeah, girls.
Who's Alana? Sisqueros?
Cicado.
Kiki?
No.
No. Alana, who's Alana? Oh, I'll tell her. Hila. All right. Do you guys have positions that you play?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of.
What's yours?
Um, two-year defense.
Okay, all right. They're getting around Drew. Andy?
She's not here.
All right, all right. We'll have to give it to the coach here. And Josie Brandon? Okay, congratulations. Congratulations.
All right, and Aria Farley. We got two sisters, Aria Farley and, and, for your Aria? And your big sister Mia. Congratulations to both of you.
And I got Autumn Coots. Not here, okay. And let's see, let me get here. Sophia Dennison. All right.
Nope, I got two. And I have Rocky Showalter. Rocky, all right. And last but not least, my neighbor, Nettie Roden. All right, why don't you girls stand in front and we'll stand behind you. You face that way, we're going to take a photograph here.
Coach.
Get the coach in there. Mark, get up here. Look at this. It's a troublemaker. All right. Thank you. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
We have the boys now. Okay, the boys can come on up. Okay, let's, Ryan Hong. All right, congratulations. Congratulations. And how about Caleb Hops? All right. Nathan? Kaiten Armstrong.
And we have a certificate of recognition for Isaac Lewis. And the next one is for Cormac Powell. Congratulations, Cormac.
Right, we got Stefan Cedar. And Judah Snipes.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, all right, Wyatt DeRouche. DeRouche! And Tristan Farida. Can I pronounce it? Boiserunk?
That's a cave or kid, man.
Where's Kate? Wait, Kate's here somewhere. All right, there you go. Congratulations, yeah.
Looks like it.
Yeah. You're lucky, you look more like your mother, though. Bennett Butler. So we're going to line up. Congratulations to all of you. Let me see that trophy.
Yeah, pretty nice.
Can we have the coaches come up also?
Yeah. Coaches?
Center after this, right? So, anybody who wants to meet the surfers in the World Surf League Finals, they're down at the Community Center. I think from five to eight, five to eight.
Tomorrow. Should we stand up behind you?
Yeah, we'll stand up.
Eyes up here. Don't block your faces. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Nice.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is council member reports.
All right. Council member reports. Anyone want to start that, or I can't? All right, I'll start that. First item, we had the California League of Cities election this past week in Garden Grove, and lo and behold, I was elected the fifth district representative to the board of Cal Cities. More work. All right. The Chamber of Commerce had an open house last week, and I know many of my colleagues were there for a new restaurant in North Beach, Sylvester's, a new Italian restaurant located where Landers was. If you get a chance to do it, meet them, they're a great represent, a new business in San Clemente. We had numerous meetings, and by numerous, I mean numerous, with Army Corps of Engineers, Congressman Levin's office trying to finalize the details with Army Corps project, and it's gotten complicated, that's all I'll say. There'll be more to come as we continue to negotiate the final details of our agreement and an effort to put more sand in the pier area. We hosted an event for HOG, who's developing a new project here in San Clemente. There'll be more on this project later on. It's going to be exciting. It's going to be here in San Clemente. It's a state-of-the-art project that they intend to develop here and start in the next few weeks. We had an emergency meeting this past week of the Songs Consumer Engagement Panel to discuss and self-report two low-level violations of wastewater leaks during the transportation of materials moved from the Songs site as it's being disconstructed, and we have a Songs meeting this week where we'll further elaborate on that, and it's, I know it's an issue of interest to everybody in San Clemente, but it's an ongoing project. I had the opportunity to attend a briefing by the Be Well organization and met with Philip Franks, its CEO, to learn more about the collaboration of several Orange County hospitals in the county. They're building a new state-of-the-art facility in Irvine that's open to all South County cities. Facility is expected to have crisis, residential treatment, sobering facilities, withdrawal management, crisis care center, and transitional care units. I think it'll be exciting once that project gets off the ground. Like I said, it's a collaboration of hospitals and trying to address the needs of all the cities in this community, and it's much needed. Andy and I attended an OCTA Regional Board Meeting to give our input into their Coastal Rail Resiliency Study Assessment and to meet with the OCTA leadership on our approach to those projects. We had a meeting last week with the California State Parks, Scott Kirby, to discuss the renewal of the California State Parks and U.S. Department of Navy, the GSA, Camp Pendleton Agreement on the 25-year renewal of San Onofre State Beach and the San Mateo Campground. That was, they pushed that up to the last day, but it's all been renewed, and we'll have a new park and facilities there for the next 25 years. We had the, and, you know, I should mention, Congressman Levin did an extraordinary job pushing that forward, and I think he deserves a lot of credit for that. We had our first home game of the San Clemente football team. They won. I think a lot of my colleagues were there. It was a great game. They made it tighter than it needed to be, but it's always good when they come away with a win, and, you know, it's one of those things, Friday night, you know, football in San Clemente, it was literally standing room only at that park on the home site, and, you know, they need to think about how to expand that because there's just not enough seating for all the...
Yeah, maybe if we had a school bond, we could pay for some more stadium seats there.
Oh, maybe. You might recall, this is something that's important to me, that several weeks ago, actually several months ago, I received a letter that actually moved me quite a bit from a resident of, not here from San Clemente, but in the Northeast, wrote a beautiful letter to San Clemente and me as mayor that talks about the efforts of our homeless advocates and reaching out to people and helping them in our community. And that letter was so moving, I reached out to the New York Times and said, "This is a really compelling story." I actually reached out to our San Clemente Times, too, but the New York Times picked it up, and the New York Times this past week wrote this beautiful article. If you haven't had a chance to read it, it's beautiful. It talks about what, has a photo of San Clemente, and it talks about our resource officers, what they do, how they help, how they reach out to people, how they're engaged with the homeless and those people that have mental health and other drug addiction and other issues. And it shows the compassionate side of our community and our outreach efforts, and it got exposure on a national level. So, I think that's pretty good, that San Clemente made the national news on what we do as a, almost as a model of what other cities could do to reach out for their homeless. So, anyhow, if you get a chance to read that article, I think it's exciting, and the last thing I will report on is that we have, as you know, and if you hadn't got a chance to see it, in North Beach, we started a, six weeks ago now, I think, the sand replenishment project there, where we're putting 30,000 cubic yards. This weekend, it was packed with people, even though it's not fully open. The sand looks beautiful, the beach looks beautiful. That project will continue a few more weeks, maybe a month, but it is something that if you haven't gone to North Beach, you're going to be excited to see the difference because right before this started, I went and took some photographs of it. It's nothing but rocks. Now, it's nothing but sand, so it's going to be a beautiful project, and it's part of our ongoing effort to restore our beaches. That's my report.
Okay, I've got some, I've got some important stuff here.
All right.
We're a little bit more than a month away from the Friends of San Clemente Carnival.
Yeah.
The Carnival in October. The dates are October 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th. That's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. October 10th is really special. Between 1 and 6, they open it as a quiet zone for kids with special needs. They don't play the loud music. They keep all the rides kind of quiet, and it's really, really good if you have special need kids, friends with, have kids with special needs. That's a great time for them to go to the Carnival, and then it opens up for regular patronage from 6 to 10. Friday, it's open 5 to 10, and Saturday, October 12th, it's the big Cinco de, no, I'm sorry, Oktoberfest, Oktoberfest, and it's going to be Los Malinos Beer Company is going in there, and they're opening up a big beer garden, be open from 2 to 11, which is also the Carnival's hours. They're going to have live music, beer, food trucks, and all that, and fun games for the kids. It should be pretty great. And then, if you can survive all of that, October 13th, it's open 1 to 10 p.m. for the last night. Important thing here, discount tickets are now on sale, 60% off of Carnival tickets. That ends October the 9th, but I guarantee you, those tickets are going to be sold out within 10 days. So, if you want the discount tickets, they're for sale at the Community Center, at the Parks and Recs Building, Ole Hanson Beach Club, and San Clemente Sports Park up at Vista Hermosa. So, get those tickets early. Everybody complains that, "Where are the discount tickets?" Because they get sold out so quick. And go to the Carnival, it's the Friends' biggest fundraiser, and all the money, 100% Friends goes back to the city, Parks and Recs Department for camp scholarships, after-school programs, the snow hill at the Glitz, and so much more. And San Clemente Friends has just passed $1 million of donations back to the city, so it's a great foundation. Come out and support it. Thank you very much.
Will there be a mayor's dunk tank at this year?
That's right.
There'll be something for the mayor, for sure.
All right. Any other reports?
Just a brief one. The Family Assistance Ministries had the ribbon cutting for the relocation of their facility. They've been in San Clemente for decades, and they're going to continue to operate here. Great news. I also participated in a video conference with the Manson Company, the company that's doing the sand dredging, to talk about the possibility of their equipment assisting us with some near-shore sand movement in the future, when the right time comes. And a little pricey, there's some other companies that could be competitive, but it's, I think, in that area of sand, as the mayor reported, we're definitely headed in the right direction. Problematic, but the right direction.
All right, yeah, just a couple things. A nice e-bike safety meeting where we, Mr. Lefler and I were part of that, looking at how to get some training courses for our e-bike riders up on the city website, right? I'm going with that, so that was great to hear. Also attended Katrina Foley's homelessness meeting with electeds. Great things that the county is doing in terms of addressing our encampments, as well as looking at some really great collaborative things that the county can do with cities in terms of inclement weather shelters. So, that's coming up in the near future, but that was really great hearing, and I want to talk to you more about that. Also had a Coastal Cities Group Leadership Committee. We're continuing to look at state-level policies and how they impact coastal cities, different assembly bills. And, yes, also, just a comment on that New York Times article, it's a really well-done article, a bit of a tragic ending at the end, but, yeah, so, it's really, really good to read. I'd highly encourage it.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, a lot of the same stuff, but I'll highlight what I mentioned a second ago. I guess it's not something that already happened, but it's going to happen, so we're hosting the Super Bowl of Surfing again at Lower Trestles, probably the end of this week. We'll see. They make the call every morning, of course. But a particular note, and I know we have folks from the Lifeguard Foundation here, but there's going to be an event, I think there's still tickets, right? Okay, yeah, they're having an event with our local heroes, the Colapentos and others, at Stance tomorrow, and you can still get tickets and go, and it's great for kids in particular, but it's also a chance for them to see their heroes up close and celebrate San Clemente as the epicenter of surfing, and we have more surfers at the highest levels than any other place, including entire countries like Brazil. So, it's awesome for San Clemente to kind of show off and let everybody know how wonderful we are and why we are the center of the surfing world. So, that will be coming this week, and there'll be a lot of activity around town. There's actually an event right now, of course, that I just mentioned, but you can still get to that role model event tomorrow and hear from the Colapentos and others, right? So, I know some of us will be there, but, yeah, so, I guess if you're heading to downtown, there will be a lot more action and people around, but it's going to be great, and it's going to be hot, so, yeah. All right, thanks.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. I'll call the first several speakers. Lois McNichol, followed by Wayne Eggleston, followed by Katerina Mashburn, followed by Carrie West. Lois McNichol?
Hi. Well, I'm here to talk about the August 30th breakfast chat that we had at the senior center, where a councilman, Rick Lefler, came and had comments to say, verbal attacks, basically, on three of the four candidates that are running for council. He did not say anything to Sarah Schneider. The other three all received negative comments about why they were not fit to run for office, his words. And that's why he was running again, because we didn't deserve to be a councilperson. And that is something that is getting to be, he then left, by the way. He didn't give us any updates on the city, on what it was doing, the things that we are used to receiving from our councilpeople. He did not give us any of that information. He wasn't there to answer questions, and he wasn't there to give us updates. He was there to simply disparage the people who were running for council. So, therefore, I don't feel that that is something that a councilperson, any councilperson, should be portraying or demonstrating to the public, and after that, it's all became more and more of an issue about what can we say at these meetings? And then, they said, "Well, you cannot talk about anything political." "Oh, it's political, because today, sand is political, because, and the tax is political." But we've talked about that before at other meetings, but now there's come down the edict that we can't talk about anything political at these meetings. So, I really do believe that that needs to be cleared up.
Next speaker.
Wayne Eggleston, followed by Katerina, followed by Carrie West, followed by Frank Villavazo.
Well, you're next? Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, Wayne Eggleston.
I thought it was a team effort.
It is. Thank you. First of all, thank you for the exhibit on the pier for Second Battalion Fourth Marines, I'm sorry, Second Battalion First Marines, about the evacuation from Afghanistan. That was a very nice exhibit. I'm here tonight to talk about the Pier Bowl issues, three of them. The Pier Bowl is populated by hundreds of thousands of people each year, and myself from Park Semper Fi Hotels, Businesses, and Residents met a year and a half ago with the city. Thus far, nothing has been done. Number one, free speech zone. Number two, pier bowl homelessness. Number three, people setting up tables, selling merchandise, and it looks like a swap meet down there. Number one, free speech zone. We need a free speech zone with regulations. We need that. Currently, it looks like a zoo. We have people down there stopping people, intimidating people, taking up picnic tables. It's not right. Businesses, residents, and visitors also have rights, and we would like to see that in the resolution when it comes forward. The park rangers are great, but the park rangers need a digital sound meter. They had, there's one for code enforcement, but they don't have one. Number two, homelessness. At Park Semper Fi, several weeks ago, we had experienced $500 worth of damage, and if the park rangers were great, a homeless outreach was great, the problem was resolved. Homelessness are sleeping under the pier and the benches on the pier and along the Alameda Lane on benches. People setting, number three, setting up tables and selling merchandise without permits and city business licenses. If they are offering merchandise for donation or collecting signatures, then they need to be placed in the free speech zone. After one and a half years of bringing these issues to the city's attention, we need your help now in the pier bowl. Please make this a priority item. A number of us would like to become involved in choosing a free speech zone away from picnic tables and reasonable regulations. Also, the pier bowl needs routine and consistent patrols from the park rangers. But we've talked about that before at other meetings, but now there's come down the edict that we can't talk about anything political at these meetings. So I really do believe that that needs to be cleared up.
Next speaker.
Wayne Eggleston, followed by Katerina, followed by Carrie West, followed by Frank Villavazo.
Well, you're next?
Go ahead.
Hi, Wayne Eggleston.
I thought it was a team effort.
It is. Thank you. First of all, thank you for the exhibit on the pier for Second Battalion Fourth Marines... I'm sorry, Second Battalion First Marines, about the evacuation from Afghanistan. That was a very nice exhibit. I'm here tonight to talk about the Pier Bowl issues, three of them. The Pier Bowl is populated by hundreds of thousands of people each year. And myself and Parks Emporify Hotels, Businesses, and Residents met a year and a half ago with the city. Thus far, nothing has been done. Number one, free speech zone. Number two, Pier Bowl homelessness. Number three, people setting up tables, selling merchandise, and it looks like a swap meet down there. Number one, free speech zone. We need a free speech zone with regulations. We need that. Currently, it looks like a zoo. We have people down there stopping people, intimidating people, taking up picnic tables. It's not right. Businesses, residents, and visitors also have rights, and we would like to see that in the resolution when it comes forward. The park rangers are great, but the park rangers need a digital sound meter. There's one for code enforcement, but they don't have one. Number two, homelessness. At Parks Emporify, several weeks ago, we had experienced $500 worth of damage. And if the park rangers were great, a homeless outreach was great, the problem was resolved. Homelessness are sleeping under the pier and the benches on the pier and along the Alameda Lane on benches. People setting... Number three, setting up tables and selling merchandise without permits and city business licenses. If they are offering merchandise for donation or collecting signatures, then they need to be placed in the free speech zone. After one and a half years of bringing these issues to the city's attention, we need your help now in the Pier Bowl. Please make this a priority item. A number of us would like to become involved in choosing a free speech zone away from picnic tables and reasonable regulations. Also, the Pier Bowl needs routine and consistent patrols from the park rangers. The RSVP building could be used effectively as a part-time substation and to deter these major problems. Again, the Pier Bowl has... We have hundreds of thousands of people down there each year. It's a cornerstone of San Clemente. We need your help now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Kathy from Katerina's. We own the business across from the pier. Just to circle back with Wayne, the amount of, we do need a free speech zone, the amount of people out there with amplified sound that are disturbing everyone walking by, it's terrible. And there's people selling art prints, laying all over the ground, people are stepping over people. I think the people that, like, stay at the San Clemente Cove, for instance, if they're out there having a barbecue, they probably can't even hear themselves talking because there's a few people in particular that are out there with a speaker and a microphone, and they're there for many hours a day. And the park rangers help, but also, like Wayne said, they don't have apparently a decibel reader, which I don't think that actually matters, because if amplified sound is not allowed in the Pier Bowl, then it shouldn't be allowed for anyone. I mean, if I was to go out on my deck at Katerina's with a speaker, with a microphone or with a bunch of music, that wouldn't be allowed, and it would be disrespectful. And I think for most people that come to the Pier Bowl, there needs to be, like, a specific area. If they want to speak, they can speak here. It's regulated. There's not... It's so loud that it's disturbing for people walking down to the pier, and it's a reflection on everybody that comes down there. And I find that you have street vendors now. I think this past weekend, someone was just out there selling hats, unregulated, unchecked. I mean, where does it end? We don't need, like, we don't need it to be, you know, every other step, you're trying to sit down on the park bench, and you can't. Or you try to go at the picnic table and you can't because someone's sat up there trying to sell something, trying to talk about something. I definitely think there could be an area for that. So if you guys could help, that'd be great.
Thank you, yeah. We're looking at all that right now, so.
My name is Carrie West. I'm with the Fishermen's, representing Marcus Barz, who couldn't be here, and I assist him. Just to reiterate, everything the same. We deal a lot with the homeless, kind of parking their stuff right behind our flag posts, which is right by our front door, sleeping on the bench right in front of the door, using our bathrooms. I mean, it's just kind of a reflection on, you know, how can we help? And we do call the sheriff, and they do get removed, but it seems like at nighttime it's getting a lot worse. And we kind of have it, we call it Zombie Land down there at nighttime. There's just not a lot of patrol. The vendors are kind of, we see that too. I mean, that, you know, we all have to have business licenses to be able to sell things, and we're seeing, you know, fruit vendors walking on the beach, trying to sell people who are going to the beach. You know, the picture guys there every single day and dropping his cigarettes right there and taking up that corner. I mean, where does it end? So we'd love your help if you can give us some suggestions. You know, we are a big operation down there, and it's just, it's getting to the point where we don't know who, how many times we can call the sheriff. It's always the same people, so. So anything you guys can do for us, that'd be great.
Thank you. We're hearing it. I'm making the same complaints, and Andy's hearing it from all of us, so we'll keep working on it.
And we're here to help you guys facilitate, too. We have a pretty big team, so.
All right.
Anything we can do, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Villavazo, followed by Diane Marino, followed by Aaron Washington.
Good evening, council, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Frank Villavazo, and I'm representing the San Clemente Cove at 104 South Alameda Lane. I would like to address the consistent noise complaint issue in the Pier Bowl. Consistently on Sundays over the course of the last several years between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., there's been an ongoing issue with individuals using a loudspeaker to deliver their personal opinions and exceeding the 55 decibels allowed by code. In addition to the noise complaints, individuals display the following behaviors. Message content is not appropriate in the presence of minors, intimidating speeches delivered aggressively to people passing by, using the public sidewalk to access the beach, and also excessive use of picnic benches. Our resort often receives noise complaints from our guests. Guests state that the noise has disrupted their ability to relax and enjoy their beach vacation. It has become a significant source of annoyance for our guests, surrounding businesses, and the public. People often use the beach as a place of relaxation and tranquility. This noise pollution and verbal intimidation interferes with a person's ability to excess, unwind, and peacefully enjoy the beach. The city code defines noise decibels greater than 55 decibels to be in violation. Unfortunately, the violation of this code is not consistently enforced in our area. I respectfully ask the city council to ensure the department that enforces the city's noise ordinances increase their patrols equipped with the proper instrumentation to record rigorously enforced the noise ordinance in the Pier Bowl. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I hope the council will consider our concerns and take action to restore the Pier Bowl and the surrounding beach area to a place that everyone can enjoy peacefully.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Diane Marino, followed by Aaron Washington.
I'm Diane Marino. I've lived here in San Clemente about 40 years. The last six years have been in Pacific shores on Santa Clara. And I'd like to bring to you a situation which I consider a safety issue on Vista Montana. Coming down... I did have a thumb drive, but I didn't realize in talking to Megan that it was supposed to be in by noon. But I have a thumb drive with pictures and a couple videos, which I'll go ahead and email to you, so you can take a look at what I've done. But traveling down Vista Hermosa, down the hill, from coming in from La Pata to Del Cerro, to turn onto my street, Santa Clara, there's a no-left-turn sign. And you'll see from my pictures that this is a safety issue, I feel, because you can see the visibility is very clear behind you and coming down the hill, so it would be very safe to make the left-hand turn. Now, I have personal reasons why I don't want to do that. I'm a CCW carrier, so I can't get a ticket, or CCW holder, so I don't want to get a ticket. So I always go down to the condominiums, make a U-turn, and then try and make a left coming out of the condos. You'll see from my pictures and the videos, this is very unsafe. You don't have the same visibility coming either way from the condominiums, but it's legal to make a left turn onto Vista Montana, which then I make a right-hand turn onto my street. I spoke with a sheriff one day who was making that left-hand turn, and he said, "I 100% agree with you." I said, "What can I do? Who do I talk to?" I thought maybe I'd talk to the city engineer. He said, "No, you got to go to a city council meeting." So that's why I'm here. I'm hoping that we can ratify this situation. It really is not a dangerous situation to make a left onto Santa Clara from Vista Montana. So I'm hoping that maybe you can have the city engineer look at that.
All right. Thank you.
So who should I send my...
Send it to the city manager.
City manager?
Andy Hall. His name's on the...
I saw that on the itinerary. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
And can we... Andy, when you get those, could you send us a photo that kind of explains that? I was a little confused.
Mr. Washington?
Hey, good evening. I just wanted to be quick and say thank you specifically to Andy Hall and Samantha Wiley and your team for getting the flags out there and mounting the plaques. I know providing the materials and stuff, that probably was the easy part, but creating the way that you mounted it, it was amazing the way that came out. And I know that 9/11 is just around the corner, and look forward to what we do on that, even if it's something simple. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Washington.
By the way, Aaron thanked some people, but Aaron did the brunt of the work on all those flags. Just want to say he's being very modest, but Aaron's the manpower behind 90% of that.
That's awesome. All right, thank you. Any other... All right, next item then.
Next item is motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? I'll second it. All right.
We're the only ones who want to get through.
All right.
I want to go over every item.
All right, so...
Was that a second by Councilmember Lefler or second by Mayor Cabral?
I second it, yeah.
Okay. And that carries five oh.
Without objection? Any objection?
Are we voting by...
Yeah, without objection.
Yeah, what he said.
Okay.
Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action?
Hearing none? Let's move on.
Close session report. City attorney.
Thank you. The council met in closed session...
The council met in closed session on item one. There was direction given and no... A1, there was direction given and no reportable action. The council met in closed session on item A2. There was direction given and no reportable action. The council met in closed session on item A1. There was no reportable action. They met in closed session on item B2, and there was no reportable action. They met in closed session on item B4. There was direction given and no reportable action. And they met in closed session on item B11, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff communications? Don't believe we have any this evening.
No communications, okay.
Public hearings. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And our first public hearing this evening is consideration of a resolution revising ambulance transportation fee rate and adoption schedule. And we have Finance Manager Ron here to present.
I'll just remind you, we've been briefed on this.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jake Ron. I'm the Finance Manager for the City of San Clemente. Tonight, we have a public hearing to consider a resolution to review ambulance transportation rates and modify the adoption schedule to better align with the Orange County healthcare agency's adoption of new rates.
Do we have to open a public hearing? Let's open up the public hearing and hear the testimony. All right.
All right.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's all right. Rates are adjusted annually, and aligning the rates with the healthcare agency rates is considered best practices and achieves better cost recovery related to ambulance and public safety service costs. The rates are listed in the report, and staff is available to address any questions that you might have. If not, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution number 24136, which would revise ambulance transportation fees and the adoption cycle and repeal resolution number 16-31.
Very thorough report, and we appreciate what you're doing, saving us a lot of money. Do we have public...
We do not have any public comments on this matter.
So is there a discussion or a motion to approve the...
I'll just say, discussion-wise, I understand why we need to update this. I understand the cost of the city. I'm just saying, in general, our ambulance fees in the state across this nation are so incredibly high. And yes, we need to make this motion. Makes sense why we need to do it, just for our national leaders, for our state leaders. There's anything they can do to work on these costs for our ambulance riders. And so some people have to decide, do I want to take an Uber to get to a hospital, or should I risk paying thousands of dollars to get to a hospital and save my life? So that's just...
Could you briefly explain the program for residents of San Clemente? Because I think, yeah, yeah.
All right, so...
It's something everybody, anybody in San Clemente should take advantage of, because it's a great program.
Yeah, there is an ambulance subscription program, and if you sign up for $40 annually, essentially, all costs will be covered. We bill the health insurance, recover from that, but any out-of-pocket or deductibles would be essentially waived if you were a member of the ambulance subscription program.
So it's, I mean, if you have a risk, it's a great program. Anything else?
Yeah, I just had a follow-up question on that subscription program. Roughly, if you know, how much does that raise every year for the city?
It raises, I want to say off the top of my head, probably like around $30,000, so...
Okay, thank you. I just, just in terms of comments, I appreciate the staff report. I do have kind of an exception with one sentence where it says the City of San Clemente is allowed to set our own rates. However, the best practice is to use the Orange County Healthcare Agency rates as a basis. I don't think it's the best practice. I think it's the easiest practice, but I don't think it's the best practice. But the fact that our rates are half of what the counties are, and we have a $200 break for our citizens, even if they don't need the subscription, I think it's a profitable, a beneficial program that we should continue, and I'm ready to support it when time comes to make a motion.
Chris?
Just would like to note quickly, as I am our representative on the Orange County Fire Authority, and we have Shane here, who's our division chief for Division III, the best division in the OCFA. Just making the point there, too, that at the OCFA, we are also looking at ways to reduce ambulance costs, actually, Mark, in line with what you're saying. San Clemente actually is well-positioned because we reserved our rights when we joined the OCFA, and we moved from having our own fire department. So we get to control our ambulance services, unlike some other cities. But there's more things that the OCFA can do to save all cities' money, in particular San Clemente, and just to let everybody know that we are working on that. And there's a potential down the road that even ambulance services might be provided by the OCFA, which could result in additional savings. So just letting everybody know that we are working on that at the OCFA level as well.
And we have... Our ambulance service is a little different than some cities, and Shane could clarify this if we need it, but we're actually guaranteed that we will have an ambulance actually in our city all the time. Other cities we have, I think Dana Point, maybe even San Juan, they have ambulance service, but they might have ambulances out of the area, then they have to bring one in. Under our contract, we have to have an ambulance on-site in the San Clemente city limits all the time. So we've got the best coverage there is.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll move if we adopt the staff recommendation.
All right, do we have to read that?
No.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead and start your voting. And that carries five oh.
All right. Next item on the agenda?
Next item on the agenda is continuance of no action on conditional permit 1021 related to the property located at 616 Del Dios, assessor's parcel number 690-552-05.
So we have a joint request of the...
Mr. Mayor, could you please open the public hearing?
Let's open this public hearing, and we will maybe hear from witnesses or test... Do we have any witnesses?
We have one speaker, Sean Cobb, representing American Tower.
I think, are you... Do you want to speak, American Towers, or are you reserving your right? I think what we have right now is we have a joint request for a continuance of this matter by all the parties. I think they're close to resolving this issue. And so if we could then, I would defer to the parties and continue this matter if we could, and close the public hearing and move this on to the November 19th, 2024 agenda.
I'll make that motion if there's any other comments.
All right. All right, well, we'll close the public hearing then. Hearing no... We've heard your report. We have a motion then to continue this?
That was a motion by Councilmember Noblock, second by Mayor Protim Enmeyer.
We'll continue this in abeyance until the November 19th, 2024. We'll take a vote on that. All right.
Mayor Protim Enmeyer, are you a yes on the motion?
No, sorry.
That's okay. That carries five oh.
Unfinished business? We have none?
We have none. Next item on the agenda is under new business, consideration of a resolution awarding sports partnership status for the fall/winter primary season sports. And we have Beaches Parks and Recreation Director Wiley here to present.
Yes.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council. I'm Samantha Wiley, Beaches Parks and Recreation Director. Before you this evening, this item is consideration of a resolution to award sports partnership statuses to three organizations and deny one application received. These applications happen annually, and... And the council may recall that just last year, the council approved an update to the sports partnership policy. So this is specifically focused on fall/winter, which is our primary sports that we're looking at this evening. The other spring/summer sports would come to you later on in this year. So this is football and soccer specifically. So based on our new policy and the structure we have in place, there's four different tiers that an organization could qualify for for partnership. Being a, being a partner gives you a greater discount on field rentals, some more premier access to our field space ahead of non-frequent users, as well as the ability to have your listing within the city catalog that's released quarterly. And we have another item later this evening about partnerships. So in that spirit, I want to reiterate that the goal of our partnership policies in general is to provide a service to the community of which the city cannot provide on its own. So it would be cumbersome for the recreation department to take on soccer leagues, youth soccer leagues, or a football league within our existing resources. So we look to local nonprofit sport organizations to help fill that gap. So with that in mind, there's three organizations this evening. And most, all of the details are in the staff report. We have Elite Soccer, which has been with the city for a number of years. They've now qualified for tier-one partnership. We have AYSO Soccer, that has previously always qualified for our highest level of partnership. But they did not meet the 90% residency requirement. They fell short of that. And so they are recommended for tier-two partnership. And then there's South Coast Youth Football, which is the tackle football league. They are also meeting and being recommended for tier-one partnership. None of the organizations have contested this. This did get reviewed by the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission. And the staff recommendation aligns with the Parks and Rec Commission as well. I do want to note that you'll see in the staff report and the charts, this is a significant subsidy. The partnership discounts go up to 90% in some areas. And this, all of our fees and our discounts are being reviewed within the BPR department fee study this year as well. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions? Chris?
Hey, Samantha. We didn't have a lot of chance to talk about it. But I think we got a request, and it's sort of timely because we had the water polo folks here tonight. I think maybe the last, just left a moment ago. But they had emailed, at least I got an email, requesting some kind of beneficial treatment under the program. Can you talk through that a little bit? I just, I don't have all the information.
It's the next item.
Okay, okay. Oh, it's coming up?
Yes.
Okay.
Next one.
All right. Yeah. Okay, then we can wait on, we can wait on that for sure. Okay.
I just had a quick question. What was the percentage for AYSO that, that threshold? How close were they to that threshold?
They were very close. It was 88.8%, so they were just shy of that. AYSO has a larger number of participants, and they fell short of the 90% residency. In talking to the organization, I can't speak for them, and I don't know that anybody's here this evening, but they have acknowledged that they can do better. They'll work to connect more closely with San Clemente residents and rearrange how they essentially recruit or find players for their organization. They do want to make sure that they stand in good graces with the city. And so they're accepting of that tier-two discount. That one exception is that we want to see AYSO back in a year with the opportunity to get their numbers up for their residency.
I have a question because this is going to be a concern for me. On the next agenda item is, we're going to have people ask for waivers. They're also in the same situation as the people asking in the next item. I mean, they're pretty similarly situated. So, you know, it's a question of what we do where someone comes pretty close but don't meet it. And I don't know, what's your, what's your thoughts? It's total discretion of the city council? Or we encourage them to work towards that? That's what AYSO has laid out as their position. I don't think anyone's here. But we'll, maybe, maybe when we have public comments, we'll get someone from AYSO.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you that, you know, the staff recommendation is always based on policy. Council has set forth and adopted a policy that should work. So when we start to make exceptions to the policy, then we either need to look at the policy again or just continue to make exceptions. The goal of these is, though, to make them more, a little bit more routine in nature. So exceptions make them less routine. The sports partnership, the field one that we're looking at, is unique in that it was just revised. So previously, the field partners aligned very similar to the aquatics partners, where it was, I think it was a 90, 80, and then there was a 70% residency. And back just about a year and a half ago, there was a discussion, and this came up with girl softball at that time, that they're so close, but not quite there. And part of that action was, let's remodel the policy to allow some kind of medium point. So between 80 and 90, if an organization's almost there, but they're not quite there. And that's why the commission and then the council approved a policy that's at 85%. So it still gives them an 85% discount. They're not quite at 90, so they're not fully there. But it doesn't bump them all the way down to the 80% discount either.
And raw numbers, what's the number that they have to reach to get to the 90% new San Clemente players?
So for AYSO, they had 1,200 participants, and only 88% of them were residents. So they were close.
That's a lot of, it's a lot of residents.
It is, it's a lot of residents, yeah. In comparison even to an organization like Elite Soccer that only had 600 participants, but they did, they got to 91% residency. So they did make it. So that, as an organization, they can choose to advertise differently to attract residents as a more of a priority. We don't dictate how they, how they attract players to their organizations. But I know that there are some strategies that an organization can use to be more resident-centric and focused.
Let me ask something. Last year, AYSO, or how many years in a row has AYSO been that tier-one, making it to that 90%?
Ever since we've had a partnership policy. So discounts, partnership policy has been a remodeled structure dating back to 2015. And then there was a model even before that, where organizations essentially paid $500 a year to use fields at their own discretion. And then they would contribute back. So 2015 is when we established a formal policy. And it's gone through some iterations. AYSO has always been the premier number-one soccer organization in San Clemente. I know that most of us grew up in San Clemente and played on AYSO. So this would be a first for them to fall underneath that very top-level partnership.
So here's, question?
Yeah, I just, I've got a comment, so finish your thought there.
Here's my thought here, is that this is the first time that they have dipped below that 90%. I'm inclined to give grace in this situation to say, all right, we will give you that tier-one for this year with the recommendation that if it's two years in a row, then you would dip down into that tier-two.
Yeah, I have no problem. I was actually thinking of going a different way is, they have 88.8% residents. So why not give them an 88.8% discount? And we can do that and make it a cap of 90%. But use, just use the percentage resident you have. They'd be almost at the 90 with that.
Are you suggesting a policy change to give the percentage of locals, that same percentage of discount up to a maximum of 90%?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just think that would be kind of the fair way of doing it. And if you dipped just a little bit below, like they did, they dipped just a little bit below, but they'd be basically at 89%. We wouldn't have to give them a grace period then. And it looks like everybody who's participating is at the, at the tier-one anyway. I don't know. It's, it just seems like a different way to give them a grace period, but use the percentage of residents that they're actually participating.
So I think the question is, is that something that's manageable from our Beaches Park and Rec Department? Or would that be an additional challenge that might make it sort of difficult to manage if we were going to assign the discount based on the percentage rather than have tiers?
It's easier to go with what's adopted in the policy. But we can, we can apply any discount necessary within our system. It would just be a special fee for AYSO.
I think staff's problem is they, they don't, we tend to have discretion. They don't. They need a policy to specifically guide them. So I think we either change the policy or we live with it. But one or the other.
All right, let's, let's see if we have public comment.
We do not have public comments on this matter.
No public comment, okay, all right. All right, well, then, let's go, let's go back to discussion. Can I say something?
Just a quick question, I did remember. Elite Soccer, is that, is that the same as CFA? Or is it, is, are they, are they counted differently? Or are they lumped together? Because I know, I know we have these different leagues. And I always thought CFA was sort of different than Elite. But I know that their logos are connected.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Councilmember Duncan. That's a really good question. And it's in the staff report. That's that fourth organization that we got was CFA. And they were denied their request because they are a, they, essentially, they, they're a club team. They pay their coaches or their trainers, whatever, whatever they call them. They pay them. That doesn't qualify for, for field partnership. Different from aquatics partners, the point of the field partnership program is to be recreation-based. 50% playtime, volunteer coaches, that kids are just getting out on the field and they're learning the sport without some level of threshold to meet the bare minimum qualification. So CFA doesn't qualify. They are a kind of a subsidiary organization of Elite Soccer League. And previously, in our old partnership policy, you would have seen Elite's application also had the CFA players. And we worked to remove those because they don't qualify because they're, they're a club team essentially. So CFA will still qualify for the nonprofit discount for field usage. And so they'll still be out on the fields, just not with that high-level 90% discount.
Or the dues, real quick, are the dues for AYSO the lowest? The people play to, pay to play? AYSO typically, the lowest that a participant would pay?
They're, they're all pretty much the same. It depends, they change season to season. But the rec leagues are really competitively priced. It's the club teams that get into the several hundreds or thousands.
Here's the problem for me is that we're talking, I mean, when we change sports, it even gets more complicated because you go from soccer to football to pickleball to baseball. And the fee structure, it should be cost recovery theoretically. That's our model, right? That's what we've said. But it's not cost recovery in every field, as I understand it.
Correct.
We don't recover any cost.
Correct.
So, so maybe what we need to do is just deal with this short-term and then look long-term about how we reestablish that cost recovery. Because literally all we're talking about is, you know, it costs a lot of money to mow the lawns, maintain the lawns, get staff out there. And, and we're just charging for that. We're not making any money off of it. And maybe we do need to look at this long-term. Have you, have you thought about that? Are you working on it? Or?
Yeah, we are in the process. The Beaches Parks and Recreation Department's going through a cost of services and revenue study right now. We're in the, we're in the midst of it. So that, as any public hearing process, is going to go to the Parks and Rec Commission once we have a schedule and a fee, a proposed schedule in place. And then it will come to council. A portion of that is to look at, what's that base fee? Any kind of commercial use, just a regular user walking on the field? What is that? And then we would back in with discounts. And then at that time, the council's going to have to make a decision of what do we want to subsidize for youth sports, if anything at all.
Yeah.
So it is, it is in the process. So a short-term agreement is totally reasonable as well.
So sometime this year or early next year, we'll get a, a, a report and it'll be brought to the entire council where we'll try and reconcile all that. Okay, that's good.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Samantha, how do you handle new organizations that would like to have access to our fields? I'm aware of this, earlier this year, well, I think it was West Coast, fairly small operation was, was looking for some concessions and some access. And I understand they didn't get any access. What is your protocol for vetting new firms that would like access to our fields?
So as part of the partnership policy, they do have to rent fields for a certain amount of time ahead of applying. The first step is to rent, even if it's just one field on a weekly basis, to kind of become what we call a frequent user. And then it gets into allocating. So once you've established yourself as an organization and you're a good user of the fields, you're a good steward of those spaces, they are then invited to our allocation meetings. And we do, for fields, we do four quarterly allocation meetings where we invite all of our partner groups and any frequent user, whether it's San Clemente Surf Soccer or West Coast or there's another organization in town, another soccer group, the rugby clubs, all of them are invited. And that's how we kind of parse out fields. The partner groups get priority just underneath city programming. In that organization, there is another kind of offshoot that an organization could go down, which is becoming a contract instructor. And that is a totally different model. But again, it's a, it's essentially a 70-30 split. So an organization could say, we want to run a league as a contract program. And that gives them higher priority over partner groups even.
And how long is the frequent user concept?
I believe it's two or three years to become a frequent user of a field. Aquatics is different, but fields is two to three years.
Two to three years as a frequent user before you're allowed into the club, so to speak.
Yes.
Wow. Is that, is that a long-term policy? That seems like a long time to.
It's been like that for some time. And it's, it's really to ensure that the organization's a lasting organization. Are they going to be able to get through even one or two, two years of becoming a regular good user? Are they paying their bills on time? Are we having to chase them to pay their, their balances? And then to also, to make sure that it's still fit within the community as well. As you can see, partnerships are, it's a, it's a pretty staff-cumbersome task. So it's not taken lightly when somebody applies for partnership. That's part of that longevity component.
Thank you.
So this is for my colleagues. This is where I think we are. The soccer league is very close to meeting the threshold. And they're not going to, and they are not asking for a waiver, as I understand it. But they do meet that 88-plus percent. We're going to deal with this, not give them a waiver. Then we're going to deal with the next group, which is a different sport. And they have similar thresholds. And they're going to ask for a waiver also. And so how do we deal with, how do we deal with those two different sports? Do we say no to this and the next one we say yes? Or we say no to both of them? Or, so that's all I'm asking to consider is that if, if, if we're thinking about waivers for isolated circumstances, we should be consistent in our policy. So I don't know how you guys want to handle this.
You know, I'm inclined to look at the history of an organization in San Clemente. And we, as the council, can decide on those waivers on an individual basis.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm okay with that. And I'm looking at both this item and the next item as well, looking at those organizations, their history in San Clemente, how they serve the community of San Clemente, not just over this last year, but over numerous, numerous years. And say, based on that history, I think a year-time period of grace would be acceptable to get them, that timeframe to try and amend any of those numbers. And then we can look at it again the following year.
Well, I, well, what would happen is between now, if we did the one year between now and then, we would be looking at the entire policy and see if it's a rational policy.
So yeah, I think give them grace for this year. And then we can reassess, assess the, the policy.
Okay.
Coming up.
Just what you wanted, Samantha, redoing the policy again.
Well, they're working on it anyhow.[1741.61] Well, they're working on it anyhow. So you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a, let's see. Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-137 with amendments to the, to Item 1 and to Item 4, granting them Tier 1 status. I believe I have that correct. Sorry, AYSO is on, sorry, tier, yeah, tier 2 on Item 1, tier 4.
Round, tier 1.
Yeah. And make amendments that grant them Tier 1.
All right.
Second.
All right. Any, is there any discussion? All right, so I'll...
Sorry, I made the motion.
Well, let's, I think we have enough discussion.
And make that amendment for one year.
For one year, yeah. Okay.
That was part of your motion, yes.
Yep. All right.
Okay, that's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Inmire, second by Councilmember Lefler Carries 5-0 to adopt Resolution Number 24-137 with the change to Item Number 1, granting Tier 1 recreational sports partnership status to AYSO. And then approving the Beaches Parks and Recreation Director to execute agreement for the same term under Tier 1 partnership for one year, Carries 5-0.
All right.
We'll record that vote.
Next item then is...
Next item on the agenda is consideration of Resolution awarding aquatics partnership status.
All right. Do we have any speakers on that?
We do have two speakers.
Okay. We've debated this, you come up at your own risk. We might change our minds.
Ellie Surveyus, followed by Logan Powell. Ellie?
Good evening, council. I am here to request a motion to approve San Clemente Water Polo for senior partnership. We would love greater access to pool space that comes with senior partnership in order to sustain our club. I was in elementary school and my family moved to San Clemente. Like any child, I had so many nerves moving into a new community. Fortunately, the first family we came in contact with wrapped us up with open arms, and they happened to be a San Clemente Water Polo family. Before I knew it, my baseball-loving brother became a water polo goalie, and I was cheering on the CHS Water Polo team as a CHS cheerleader. I am here now cheering on SC Water Polo as a parent of two children in the program. Multiple generational bonds were formed through San Clemente Water Polo for our family and many others. I can see and feel it as I look around this room, or I could see and feel it as I looked around this room at those young water polo families today, who not only represent community, but also the high performance of our athletes. When my daughter started Shortcliff, she was searching for her thing. I'm so grateful that she decided to try water polo, and I will never forget the immediate love she received on her first day. To be welcomed into a group of girls like that during your middle school years is invaluable. And knowing that the group is full of young women who are active in their community and schools, who live healthy lives, and who make academics and teamwork a top priority makes our hearts burst. As the feeder club for our hometown high school, SC Water Polo Club was instrumental in assuring that she would have a thing in high school to participate in and be a part of. She continues to thrive as a member of the high school team. This would not have happened if SC Water Polo did not have an all-girls teams at different experience levels. She most likely would not have joined a coed team due to the physicality and contact nature of the sport. Our boys' teams meet the senior partner residency requirement of 90%. To fill our all-girls team, our club allows girls from neighboring towns if they elect to attend CHS. And this brings our residency to 87%. Please grant us this exception. Without it, this amazing life opportunity would not have existed for our SC girls looking for their thing. My son began SC Water Polo as an eight-year-old. He loved the sport and his teammates, but the sport itself was hard. He decided to give it a break. His coaches supported his decision and cheered him on while he tried other things. When his heart led him back to this unique community, they welcomed him with open arms. SC Water Polo helped teach my son invaluable life lessons, that it's important to surround yourself with good people that support you no matter what, and that while life, while things may be difficult, hard work pays off. Since COVID, our club has been struggling to establish resources, and most critically, access to affordable pool space. With a small non-regulation high school pool, we need the greater access to city pool space so our nonprofit club can pass on low-cost benefits to residents to continue to fill teams and keep local athletes local. What a gift it would be to see our son and daughter grow in this hometown pools together and be afforded the opportunity to plan our amazing facility, creating bonds that will strengthen this SC community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, perfect timing.
Oh, was it? Oh, I practiced. Woo!
Coach.
Logan Powell?
The second.
All right. City Council members, my name is Logan Powell. I am the club director for San Clemente Water Polo Club. My family has been San Clemente resident since 1946. I am speaking today to request that our club be approved for senior partnership status. We did not pass the split vote for senior partnership at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting in July due to the requirements that we learned of in the meeting. There were three requirements that we were deemed to fall short of. An existing five-year junior partnership with the city of San Clemente, a minimum of 300 members, and a minimum of 90% city of San Clemente residency for our members. What follows is an explanation of why we should be granted a senior partnership. First, COVID forced the previous version of this nonprofit business to dissolve. The most recent iteration of this water polo club has only had a partnership with the city for two years. Its previous version, San Clemente Triton's Water Polo Club, had an ongoing partnership with the city for nearly two decades. I have operated as club director for both of these clubs. They're the same club, they just have the different EINs. Secondly, a significant portion of our club's athletes were not counted towards our minimum requirement of 300 members. These club members are 8U or splash ball players. The reason stated for their omission is that they're merely recreation members. Splash ball is comprised of five-to-eight-year-olds and are the lifeblood of our program. A significant portion of our national champion 10U athletes that you saw were splash ball members. These athletes should be counted. With those members, we meet the minimum of 300. Third, 87% of our members are residents of the city of San Clemente. Our male members, as she said, significantly exceed the minimum 90% benchmark. However, we are the only club in South Orange County that offer all girls' teams in each age division. Other clubs are coed at the younger ages. This draws girls from outside the city. The fact that our residency percentage, this fact drops our residency percentage. But I think the opportunity available to the young women that this creates is worth going below this threshold. Lastly, I would like to comment on the current policies surrounding partnerships with the city of San Clemente for aquatics programs. As Councilmember Cabral said, you know, why do one waiver without doing the other? I think we're unique. These programs in the pools, with pool and pool space, they're a very scarce, expensive, and obvious necessary factor in these programs. In order to grow, we need access to pools. It's hard for us to maintain these levels. And to get access to the pools, we need a partnership. It's difficult to meet the current requirements of the city policies with the bottleneck of pools. I recommend the city review these policies for aquatic programs only. They should not be treated the same as programs that only require fields like soccer, which are much more numerous. Our nonprofit is currently operating in a slight loss due to the bottleneck of pool availability and costs. The senior partnership would enable our business to become viable for the years to come so we can continue to offer a great service to the city of San Clemente. Thank you guys for your time, much appreciated.
Ask the coach a quick question.
Hold on. I got it.
Oh, you want me to draw my request to speak? I'll draw it.
Oh, no, go ahead. All right. I didn't see it here.
Yeah, just real quick, is the program, you have 256 participants now, not counting the splashing?
Correct.
Does it seem to be growing since...
Every year, yeah, every year.
Okay, that's my only question.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Do you access other pools, like the Talega Pool and others?
We do. Well, no, not Talega Pools. We are in the San Clemente High School here, the pool. And then just recently, we've been forced to go to Saddleback. So we're at Saddleback three nights a week, just because our numbers are bold and we have nowhere to go. So we are also, we've been at Bitter Mosa off and on for the past couple of years as well.
Does the Talega Association have an impediment to, a rule that prevents you from accessing the local...
The problem with the Talega Pools is the equipment necessary. I think that they have a pushback on what equipment we could have there, and then also the shallowness of the pools. So it's just not really set for water polo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
All right, yeah. Any other comment? Okay, all right. Yeah, we did, I think you sent it to everybody, the nice little memo about why we should give a waiver. And I think the rationale for the young woman is compelling to me, at least. We need to get more young women into these sports activities, as you suggested. It's important for their mental health and their growth. And we could just blame our Parks and Recreation Director for this policy and this decision. But it's our fault. It's not really our fault. It's just that we create a policy, and she has to enforce it. She doesn't do it to be mean, or sometimes people say, well, she didn't, she denied. Well, that's because we create rules and she has to enforce them. And so that's, you know, she should take no blame. And she's just following the rules as we outline them. But the only other thing I would suggest is, have we officially asked you to come up with a new policy that looks at, we did?
Yeah, that's part of this resolution this evening.
Okay, all right.
Just one comment. I'd love the fact that you are doing a full women's program, like you mentioned. And I would just hate to see us punish you for doing a good thing. So I'm really hopeful that the rest of the council sees this as well, and giving grace on this aspect, and a waiver for a year, and then to relooking at this policy.
All right, this, someone want to make a motion?
I'll move the resolution.
Is there a sec? With, or any?
With Mark's comments, that this for one year.
One year, yeah.
And that we reconsider the policy at the end of year.
That, can I add a friendly amendment, that we give them senior partnership agreement for the Water Polo Club?
Absolutely, that's exactly what we do.
I'll second that with a friendly amendment.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, we'll vote on that. All right.
Carries 5-0.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of public art installation San Clemente Lifeguard Monument and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Class 3.
All right, do we have a report on that?
Yes. Good evening, I'm Samantha Wiley, Beaches Parks and Recreation Director. As the staff report states, we this evening are looking at a public art installation request from the San Clemente Lifeguard and Junior Lifeguard Foundation for what is a monument titled "The Rescue." This request came in almost two years ago now. I started conversations with the foundation and their board, expressed an interest in recognizing the hard work and efforts of a 90-plus-year service to the citizens and visitors of San Clemente that the marine safety staff and ocean lifeguards put forth year-round. The effort was to acknowledge their anniversary as a lifeguarding organization, and also recognize their contributions for past, present, and future. So this, I'm going to talk a little bit about the monument, although I do know that Greg Holzaser is here as well. So this went through the public art process, which is a policy adopted by the council. It made its way through the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission, the Design Review Subcommittee, as well as the Arts and Culture Committee. It received feedback from each of those bodies. And I want to commend the foundation for incorporating all of that feedback as they got it along the way. So this is the monument, and it is again called "The Rescue." This is a mock-up of the front. The request is to install this in the pier bowl area. There's four different proposed locations. The staff recommendation is location D, and I will get to that on the screen as well. As you can see, this is a, it's a monument that depicts both a male and a female lifeguard watching over the waters. It was important to the foundation and the artists to make sure that their eyes were focused on the water. We never want our lifeguards taking their eyes off the water. So I know through the course of the different approval bodies, that came up often, well, why are you looking at the backside of them? Well, the goal is to really almost educate the public that our lifeguards are dedicated to constantly looking forward as well. So these are the different locations. There's four of them. Again, the staff recommendation is location D. That came out of a conversation through the Arts and Culture Committee as a location that really could be an engaging space with allowing the public to look at the monument from all angles, but also not impede any important public space for relaxing, for putting a towel down, for picnicking, if you will. And I believe the foundation is supportive of that option as well. This is just another angle of this location. You'll see the location as in yellow on this image on the screen. I want to note that part of the conversation this evening is going to be about the ongoing maintenance costs. As with any bronze statue, it's going to require maintenance. We see that at our marine monument. And the Heritage of San Clemente Foundation covers the full cost of maintaining that annually for us. And we, staff and the foundation estimate that the annual cost, it'll be about $1,000 a year, or $2,000 every year, or every two years. And that is just to really ensure that it's not getting weathered inappropriately, or starting to become discolored, and to just make sure it's well-groomed, as we see the marine monument is also very well-groomed. The foundation has committed to funding the entire sculpture build-out, the installation, and all of those, the areas that go into the installation. And that's estimated at about $250,000. The piece that, we're looking for direction from the council, then to work further with the city manager, is regarding the ongoing maintenance. I do want to say that after the agenda was published, I did receive word from the Friends Board, and I am an adjunct board member for the Friends Foundation, that the board is supportive of contributing $1,000 annually towards the maintenance cost. So I wanted to make sure that was clear from the Friends side as well. And then I'm understanding that the Lifeguard Foundation would also then be willing to contribute the remainder of that balance. So I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any. But the goal here tonight is to get feedback, one way or the other, on the location, approve or deny the application in and of itself, and then also authorize staff to pursue the permitting process with the Coastal Commission as well. And then to strike any kind of MOU for consideration for maintenance purposes.
All right. Let's hear from public comment first, or are you the executive director of the...
I'm Greg Holzaser. I'm here tonight as the president of the San Clemente Lifeguard and Junior Guard Foundation, yes.
All right, we'll let you speak on this issue.
Thank you very much. All I can say is, wow, I don't even need to give a report at this point. Thank you, Samantha. She's been fantastic to work with. But just very quickly, I'll hit the highlights. I'm here tonight as the president of our foundation, and two of our board members, Jim Nielsen and Larry Moore, are here with me also. And we are so excited about this opportunity, about this project. We have been working on it for a couple of years, a couple of years now. And really, the history goes back to July of 1931, when the city council approved the first paid lifeguard for the city of San Clemente. And since that time, the city's had an enviable record of the commitment to safety on our beaches. In fact, it's been more than 45 years since there's been a drowning on a guarded city beach, which is just an amazing record. So the sculpture's an opportunity to recognize a city's 90-plus-year commitment to safety on our beaches. And in that time, we figured there's probably been, since records have been held, close to 120,000 people that have been rescued. And those are people that get to go home every night. And so the safety is in our DNA. So the next slide basically just shows what Samantha covered, but we're titling the sculpture "The Rescue." And we've talked about how it celebrates our 90-plus-year commitment to safety. It'll be completely made out of bronze. Our sculptor is Bill Linebrook. Bill is a renowned sculptor. He did the marine at Parks and Perfie. He's doing the sculptures in Dana Point of the surfers there. The picture you see here is based upon a maquette, a clay model. So it'll obviously be, will be refined as the project moves forward. The platform is about four feet by five feet, or it takes about the same amount of space as two beach chairs. And it'll be approximately eight foot high, which includes a two-foot pedestal. And we will be looking to raise between $250,000 and $300,000 from private donations. And as Samantha mentioned, under the current city policy, we would look to donate the sculpture and have the city pick up the maintenance. And we certainly appreciate the commitment by the Friends and the Lifeguard Association to help out with that, if that's what the city council decides. If you could look at the next slide, please. So this is just another picture of how it would be laid out. You can see, this picture's a little bit more developed than what we had in the staff report. We would propose to have pavers around and a plaque in front. And it just works so well among, and it was actually the Arts and Culture Committee that took us down there and said, it needs to go right here. Because it's just, it's perfect. It's like a little amphitheater surrounded by these trees. So we're really excited about that location. So we're talking about being located in Parque del Mar. If you could put the next slide up, please. And we've already talked about why it's facing the ocean, so I won't talk anymore about it. that. And we have spoken with the neighboring property owners, the San Clemente Cove, the condos up above, and the Casa from Monica, and have had support from them. Oh, I guess my three minutes are up. So I apologize for not getting through my entire presentation.
Were we gonna, do you have a question? Anybody have a question for him? Is there any other public speakers?
Rick Delanti, oops.
All right.
Rick Delanti, looks like my microphone just went out.
Oh, no.
Oh, it's back on, they reset it.
We might have a question for you.
Hang around, Greg.
I'll hang around.
Mr. Delanti, yes, come on up and...
Thank you, City Council, for having us tonight to speak about this very important touchstone that San Clemente could recognize with the sculpture of these lifeguards by "Called the Rescue" by Bill Linebrook, as Greg noted, a very renowned sculptor. I'm here tonight to talk about the creative and aesthetic qualities of the sculpture and how they would benefit the city and visitors to the city. First of all, in the significance of public art, it's free, so this would be interactive with the public. They'd be able to walk right up to it, and they see it, and there's no admission, they'd be able to interact with it from all angles. Second, it expresses community values. It not only elevates the arts within our city, but it also, in this case, elevates public safety and its importance. Third, it heightens the awareness of the surroundings, for example, the ocean environment, that when people see this, they'll realize that it's there because the ocean environment is very important to the city of San Clemente and to the people who use the beaches. Fourth, public art connects residents to their shared history. A lot of residents have grown up in junior lifeguards, raised their families on the beaches. This sculpture would remind them of how important the beaches are to San Clemente, how important the lifeguards are to them. It opens eyes and minds, and in this case, to being safe when going into the water. So it's just, it's almost like a signal to people that are visiting the beaches that safety is important, especially to you, and to the city of San Clemente. And finally, it identifies a place, just as Edvard Erikson's Little Mermaid does in the Copenhagen Harbor. You think of that sculpture and you think of Copenhagen. This could be something that people identify with San Clemente. And finally, it inspires others, particularly lifeguards, to become lifeguards. I'd like to talk about, finally, the quality of Bill Linebrook's sculpture. As a artist myself, I've worked with public arts, specifically in the creating of the city flag, the Ocean Festival logo, the Triton logo, and the mural that is at the base of the pier. And in public art, you take characteristics of the city and the community into account, and this is definitely what Bill Linebrook would be doing with this, and he would be doing in a very creative way. You see by this slide examples of his work in the Surfing Hall of History in Dana Point, what it's brought to Dana Point in the quality of the sculpture. I mean, that metal looks like flesh. It's an amazing achievement for an artist to be able to, be able to craft this to this degree. And you see the marine monument also that he's created. I designed the Triton logo, and it was amazing to me to see it brought to life by Bill Linebrook in the bronze sculpture that is now out in front of the high school. So the city would be commissioning, well, not commissioning, because the foundation is doing it, but they'd be seeing quality artwork. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
No additional speakers.
No additional speakers, all right. Is there discussion?
I just had a quick question of Mr. Delanti. Did you assist in the design of the features of the sculpture at all?
I did not.
Okay, I was going to say, it doesn't look exactly like David Hasselhoff or Pamela Anderson, but it's still a pretty good depiction of our lifeguard, so I, very good. Do we need to make a decision on the location if we move forward with this?
This is what, let me tell you a couple, I wanted to speak to this, because this is not, I've had discussions with Greg and the committee, have gone out there and seen. My concern, and this is a dilemma, it's a sort of a chicken and egg, you know, what do we do first? Do we let them raise the money and get everything in order, and then come to the city council? Or do we approve it, subject to a final approval by the city council? They suggested that we take these first steps, because without these first steps, they can't raise the money without some buy-in from the city council. So the only thing I want to do, and I'll make this proposal later on, is that since we don't know what the time period where they will resolve this, get the funding, raise our money, it could be a year, it could be five years, hopefully not, hopefully it's next year, or, but rather than leave it open-ended, is at the end of the period where they have their financing, have their funding, we've got the approval of the coastal commission, it gets brought back to the city council for one ultimate approval, and with everything finalized as to what's going to get done. And I don't see anything changing, but maybe some, well, I just don't see anything changing between then and there, but I'd like to see, have maybe a city council in five years or 10 years, or whenever this gets approved, you know, have some kind of say on it.
What do you mean by have some sort of say on it?
Well, have the final approval.
Once they've raised the money to build the statue, when you say final approval, what beyond that they've presented, do you think the council would need?
Well, I think we approve the statue and the location, the...
The dimensions and just...
The dimensions of the plaque, all that stuff, yeah.
I think a conditional approval probably is a good idea. Years ago, we approved an amphitheater up in city-owned property near Talega, and the group wasn't able to put the funding together, and we didn't have a annual check-in time to make, to have the lease conditional. I think a conditional provision is reasonable. I don't have any doubt that the money's going to be raised and this thing will be built. I think a great addition to our city, and I'm all in favor of it.
Hopefully this year.
Yeah, hopefully, but maybe in the approval process, which I'm supportive of, we could have an annual report back on the condition with a maximum of, let's say, five years for, you know, at a time when we may need to reconsider if it's not done by five years, but just an annual report on how it's going. Hopefully, they won't even need that. But I think we ought to give them the green light, because then it's easy for them to raise money.
I think so.
If they know they've got the location, they've got the ground, they've got approvals, and no one's going to be jumping up saying, we absolutely can't do this. I think it'd be a wonderful amenity for our city.
Mr. Mayor, we did receive one additional speaker card. Would you like to hear from that speaker?
Sure.
Jim Kempton, sorry for the late arrival, but I just came from the San Clemente night down at the community center, and there were probably 1,000 people there. And when I said that there was going to be a statue potentially, I can't tell you how many people said, please go to the city council and tell them just how supportive we are of this. I think it'll be a tremendous amenity for the city and a great honor for all of those unsung heroes that we know have saved so many thousands of lives and made the city safe in the water, which is our biggest amenity. So just wanted to pass that along to all of you and say that everyone that we know is in total support of this in the surfing community. Thank you.
And I think everybody up here is too, but any other?
So a conditional permit, what's that, what's different than that than the staff recommendation? I mean, what's the wording? What are the conditions that are different than the staff recommendation?
Yeah, the number, Subpart B is conditionally approved installation, so that's already in there.
Yeah.
The question is, what are the conditions? I would recommend that just we approve the lease, that we have the lease, say, for a period of five years with possible extensions of two to three years, but on an annual basis, they report back on the status of their fundraising and the, how the fundraising's going.
You know, right now, the condition is getting coastal commission approval, right? I understand those concerns. I don't want to add any difficulty to this process already, I just want to give them the green light and turn them loose. So I don't think I would be supportive of setting any additional conditions. I understand those concerns with some prior projects, but I don't think that's going to be the case here. And, you know, we haven't really discussed it, but I would agree that the city take the maintenance costs on, knowing that we do have some local organizations that would be contributing to the fund to allow the city to do that. $1,000 is not a lot of money in the scheme of things, and what we've seen in other cases is when we have other groups take on the maintenance, sometimes that's problematic if there's issues, right? And then people blame the city. So it's, I think it's actually better if we control that and then we work with the organizations to provide that funding, but at least we know that there's a responsible party, the city, to maintain that statue in perpetuity. So I don't know, I appreciate those comments, but I would move the staff recommendation as written.
All right.
I'll second that. Wait, is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
I would make a substitute motion that we include in the condition of the lease a five-year term, subject, and if the project isn't completed within five years, that the city has an option to extend, but that we have some definite timeline. And the reason is because it's a responsible thing to do for our citizens, not to tie up a piece of property for an unlimited amount of time. I have no concern about the ability to complete the project, but it's also a very small matter to add a sentence in a lease, simply saying, if it's not completed within five years, we have the discretion to reconsider or extend. So it's just for the safeguard of the citizens, as no disparagement at all on the organization, I think this is a gung-ho project that will be done. But I think it's just a reasonable thing to do for the protection of our citizens.
It's just a safety thing in case.
Yeah. So that's my substitute motion.
All right. I'll second that. Rick, do you have?
Yeah, so we're concerned about the space that it's taking up?
Concerned about anything. It's city land, we're giving it up for potentially an unlimited amount of time if the project, for whatever reason, is not done. I think as a city, as representing our citizens, we have some ability to say, what if, imagine we're sitting here five years from now, it hasn't been built, and no one knows when it's going to be built, and we're saying, well, we got this lease, now we have to legally figure out how to terminate it. I think it's just a safeguard. It's a sentence in a lease, it costs nothing, and it gives a reasonable safeguard, that's all.
City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Noblock, there is no lease that's being proposed as part of staff's recommendation. What's being proposed is a maintenance agreement, so are you...
Well, it's a, there's an agreement to use our space, so...
We're asking for direction as to the type of agreement and its terms that you give the city manager authority to negotiate.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking, that when the city negotiates, it's going to be a ground lease or a license, if you will.
A license.
And that's an agreement which has conditions, whether it's a lease or a license.
So maybe in the negotiation, you know, all this stuff will be worked out.
Yeah, in the negotiations, whether it's a lease or a license, that there be a five-year term to assure that the project gets done, and if not, the city has the ability to extend it.
All right. Well, or not extend it, you know, I don't know what the council's going to be then, and for that small of a space. Also, a question, so could you, could it's possible to enter into an MOU with the Friends Foundation to make that an endowment every year of $1,000, so the city isn't even on the hook for that?
I think that's something, as part of the, working with the city manager and these organizations, so if it's the Friends that wanted to come forward and contribute, that would be part of the conversation about the maintenance portion of it, and can certainly be incorporated into a license agreement or MOU, whatever that looks like.
So maybe because the city manager is going to negotiate all this with them, we can just approve this as-is?
Well, we can approve it, but right now, he has no direction in that regard. It's a green light, it's a total green light. I'm just saying, we give them the green light, but we put in a safety net, worst-case scenario, if it doesn't go through, in a relatively long period of time, five years.
All right. We got a vote pending then, so let's, without any further discussion, what do we, is this the right vote?
This is the substitute motion, yes.
It's a substitute, all right.
So it looks like, Mayor, we need your vote.
I voted.
It's not, are you a yes or a no? It's not coming up here.
Because I'm voting for you. I'm voting for you.
Is there any other?
Well, it says, it's got my name on it.
I'm a yes. Yeah, on the substitute, yeah. Okay.
The motion, the substitute motion fails.
Right, that's accurate.
That's accurate, okay. All right, yeah, well, let's...
So we'll go back to the original motion on the table, which was a motion by Councilmember Duncan, second by Mayor Protim Enmeyer.
Well, wait, before you vote, am I...
Yeah, I'm going to vote for it. It was great.
All right.
I don't know what happened on that last one.
Yeah, that was weird.
I'll vote for you, though.
Sure, I'll vote for you.
That vote carries five oh, that's the original.
Okay, thank you.
That's on the table, thank you.
All right, we want to see this done next year. That'll solve all our problems.
Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does council wish to pull any items?
Anybody want to pull anything?
The e-bike policy is on the consent calendar, correct?
Yes, correct.
We want to pull that, then, yeah.
11E, or, excuse me.
Who's pulling that?
11D.
Member of the public, or?
I'm going to pull that if it hasn't already been.
It hasn't.
Well, the public can't pull.
Okay, anything else? All right, anybody else want to pull anything? Okay, so someone want to move the remainder of the consent?
I'll move the balance.
I'll second.
All right, take...
Yeah, so...
Oh, is there public comment?
There's public comment on item 11D, which was pulled, and item 11E.
All right, let's hear, let's hear public comment on 11E. Who is it?
Tom Streeter.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a presentation slideshow. See if it comes up. Two weeks ago, we discussed the homelessness, anti-camping ordinance, and Section 3 is drafted rather forcefully, saying the city may enforce any violation of this chapter pursuant by any means provided by law, which is fairly strong. And everybody on the dais said, whoa, 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 the important word there is "may", which means that we're going to have some discretion going on here. And of course, there's obviously going to be some discretion, and so, next slide, please. That's what I would like to see as Section B, which is the city manager talks with all the law enforcement agencies and says, okay, let's have a uniform policy on discretion when we enforce this and when we don't, and that way we don't have the lifeguards having one policy, the park rangers having another, and the city compliance officers having yet a third. We should have a uniform policy, and the city manager is the one to promulgate it. And I have indeed some guidelines, which I would suggest to Andy Hall, next slide. Here they are. First is that during the day, you always enforce. If somebody is camping out between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., you got to roust them. Just no two ways about it. Next slide. What do you do between 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.? Some poor park ranger, some lifeguard finds a guy camping underneath the pier. What do you do at 10:30 at night? Well, maybe there'll be a shelter which is prepared to accept the guy. Fine, take him there. Now, some homeless people are not willing to go to certain shelters, that's fine. See if there is a shelter which will take them with some mutually acceptable shelter. That's great, you take him there. Next slide. Okay, what happens if you don't have a mutually acceptable shelter? You can't leave the guy on the beach. The tide will come in and drown him, he'll poop on the beach, something bad will happen. Take him to the sidewalk in front of this... will happen. Take him to the sidewalk in front of this building where the sheriff can watch him. Next slide. Offer to take him to the sidewalk in front of this building. Offer to take him to the nearest OCTA bus stop in the morning, and don't enforce the anti-camping rules for as long as he's parking in front of this building, under the watchful eye of Captain Christian, until the morning comes, or unless he refuses to break camp. You got to move him out if he won't break camp. Next slide. If the camper is not prepared to relocate his campsite to the sheriff's substation out front at 10:30 in the morning, or 10:30 at night, if he's not prepared to move out from underneath the pier and move up here, or if we move him up here and he won't go, arrest him.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. All right. Only speaker?
We have an item on Speaker 11, Speaker on item 11D, but that item was pulled.
So, did you want to move the rest of the?
I'll revive my motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar items.
You know, I would like, just based on those, I would like to pull 11E.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right.
There's no comments on 11E.
So, we have two, two items pulled. You want, well, you want to remove?
If there are no public comments on 11E, I'll move the balance.
All right, we just had...
With the exception of those two items, 11E and 11, what is it, D?
Okay, all right. All right. Let's take a vote on the remainder, or except for 11D and 11E.
Okay, who's moving it?
It was a motion, but I'll just, we can do a roll call vote. It was a motion by Councilmember Noblock, second by Mayor Protim Enmeyer, to move the consent calendar with the removals of item D and E. Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lefler. Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Enmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Kerbov.
Aye.
Carries five oh.
All right, let's move on then to item 11D, the, this pulled by...
This is...
Chris.
The second reading of ordinance number 1778, regulating the operation and use of electric bicycles and other electric transportation devices, and finding the ordinance not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
All right.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and speak to why I pulled the item. Well, the suggestion came from Mark Roden, who was here earlier to celebrate his daughter on the water polo team. But Mark's also, you know, retired police officer and on our Public Safety Committee, and he was part of drafting the ordinance that we ended up adopting. And one of the things he pointed out was, we have a provision that does not allow two people on a bicycle unless the driver is either 18 or has a license, and there's a seat, then it would allow two people on the bicycle. You know, he kind of pointed out, that doesn't really solve the problem. The problem is multiple people on an electric bicycle vehicle that don't know the rules of the road, that haven't ever received any training, and that the seat doesn't really change the equation that much, that we should allow it, basically. And I, it's very painful, because I have e-bike riders as my kids, and I don't think they'd be too happy with me bringing this item actually forward. But I think the reality is, because we don't have a state law that regulates this and gives us the authority to, and it's kind of a clear guideline to regulate e-bike riding, in the interest of safety, and also because it become, I think, I was thinking about, how could the sheriff's department practically determine whether something's a seat or not, especially if they're looking at two kids on the bike? So I tend to agree with Mark's suggestion that we should just not allow individuals, unless they are 18 and/or have a license, to ride the e-bike with a passenger on the bike, whether there's a seat or not that the passenger's sitting on. So that, that minor adjustment was the suggestion, and I'm interested in hearing what other council members think. If they don't think that's helpful or necessary, I mean, it's not an end-all, be-all, but I thought it was worth bringing up. We would have to do the first reading again and push the second reading back till the next meeting, in terms of the implementation of the policy, but I thought it was at least worth a discussion.
I, I would, what I would like to do is, I'd like to have the second reading pass this, and if there's an amendment that needs to be made, and you want, and send that back to the committee, have them look at it, to see if they recommend changes, and that way we could, at some point in the future, make those changes. I think it's more complicated than that. I actually, the people I see obeying the law are these young girls that are going to school. I see them riding. They have a passenger sometime. I don't know if it's a family member. They appear young. I don't know how old they are, but I see them. And actually, for me, they're the safest drivers that I see out there, the young girls that are riding around town, and they, they transport people to the stores. And so, I don't know, I don't know the answer. I'm like you. It's, it's a difficult one. I would rather, you know, see us start on the path, get what we've done, all the work we've done, get that into play, and then send us back to our committee and have them look at this question that you're proposing, to see if there's a different change. But those are my thoughts.
Just to be clear on the logic there, it's just that, okay, when you're riding a pedal bike, you have more control over it. It's like when you drive a car with a stick shift, you have more control, right? Because you're actually sort of operating the car. When you're pedaling a bike, you have more control. When the bike is powering on its own, you have less control.
Correct.
And now you have someone who didn't have to go through any kind of train, drive, training course, like you do for a scooter, but basically goes about the same speed. And you have less control when there's a passenger on there, right? Because the passenger's leaning one way and the other, and so it makes it less stable on the bike. Look, you know, Mayor, I tend to agree, like, though, we kind of want to get this on the books, too, right? Like, there's an interest in that, too, because I know people are knowing about this now, and they're actually kind of excited that we're doing. I've talked to a lot of people, and they're like, wow, you guys really are doing something about this. And it's really widely supported, except for when the kids riding the bikes, probably, but...
My students aren't happy with me.
Yeah, yeah, students are not happy. My kids aren't happy. But again, we have to do something before something tragic happens, too, right? To try to do whatever we can to prevent that. So I certainly, I, you know, I see your point on that as well. I just, you know, I thought because we were doing this and we got that suggestion, it was worth bringing up. But I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts.
But, I mean, I think they did review. I'd rather have them review. I don't, I don't consider myself the expert on this, and maybe they can go out and study it a little bit more and see, you know, what other experts are saying about it.
Can I speak to the practicality? That's impressive. You're absolutely right. And practicality, a bicycle, even an e-bike, is made for a center of gravity. It's made, it's made for one person on a seat. Even bicycles, you can't carry somebody on it. You can't put them on the handlebars, right? It's illegal. So, if we leave it the way it is, I don't know whether they're going to enforce it or not, but at least you see three people hanging on a bike, you can stop them. If you make it by age, you cannot stop somebody to check their age.
Oh, no, the change wouldn't be on the age. The age is already in there. The policy, right? No?
No.
Oh.
I don't think so.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's changing on the age, too?
Changing the age also.
Changing the age to make that a fact.
What's the, sorry, what's the current policy? Maybe that's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, the current policy says that in order to have a passenger, you have to have a seat that accommodates two people. So they can't ride on handlebars. They can't try to double up on a single seat. So in order to have a passenger, you've got to have a passenger seat. Right now, the age isn't included.
Oh, okay, okay. So I thought the only change was the seat part of it. Yeah, no, I tend to agree that the age actually increases the complication for the...
Although I think it's a good idea.
The enforcement becomes very challenging. I want to make this easiest to enforce, too, right? That's the other thing, is like, already, they can't, they can't, it's going to be hard to identify people, because they can't chase the e-bike riders. So, okay, yeah, knowing that, I think maybe we could pass it and ask the Public Safety Committee to go back and look at...
Refine it.
Look at whether, you know, how it's written with the extra passenger is the best way to do it, or maybe there's a better way.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that. I disagree with a couple of comments. I, having ridden a bike and delivered my newspaper route on hilly country in Maryland for five years, and having ridden lots and lots and lots of people on my bike, I think you have more stability on a motorized vehicle with a second passenger than when you're pedaling. And I also think, in my humble opinion, that kids that are used to bicycles and motorbikes, that 18 is a little, I'd like to see it perhaps even younger. But I do think that this is kind of a nebulous issue, and I don't have any objection. I like the idea of having our Public Safety Committee weigh in on tweaking that condition that Chris brought up. So I can support moving forward with referral to the Safety Commission for the review of that issue.
Then I'll make the motion.
We do have one speaker card.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, let's...
Susan Ambrose.
Let's hear from our speaker. She has a solution for us.
This is a longtime bike rider here.
That's right.
This is an e-biker extraordinaire.
Did you ride your e-bike here tonight?
You know, I was about to.
Okay.
But my neighbor gave me a ride instead. Just wanted to talk to me. And anyway, thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for the great work that you're doing for our city. I am here to talk about the ordinance that you're talking about right now, ordinance number 1778, regulating the operation and use of electric bikes and other electric transportation devices, and finding the ordinance not subject to California Environmental Quality Act. I've looked through this act, or the ordinance, and some of the changes that you'd like to make. I really appreciate that in several of these categories, you have many details, so people can understand what you're talking about. Make it in English. And I don't mean English versus Spanish. I mean, make it easier to understand for the party who's trying to read this. And I actually dug out, with the help of a good friend, I'm looking at section 62, I'm sorry, 10 dot 62 dot 030, restrictions on beach and beach trail. Here's what it says under that. Nothing super detailed. The operation and use of electric bicycles, motorized scooters, electrically motorized boards, and other similar motorized recreational devices on the beach and beach trail shall be governed by 12 dot 32 dot 130 of the San Clemente Municipal Code. And that's it. What does that tell you, anything, about electric things? What, we looked up the code here, 1232130. It's got great, and in fact, Laura, would you pass those papers out that I brought for the city council and the city manager?
They're at the dais.
Okay, great, thank you. The first page is wonderful, with all of your definitions, et cetera. And on the back, though, is really the gold. It's 11D, electric bicycles, motorized scooters, electrically motorized boards, and other similar motorized recreational devices prohibited. That's what people need to know. You can't ride your bike on the track, on the trail, on the beach. Please, please, include this in your description, in your ordinance, when you put this all together. In fact, the whole notion of 1232130 would be excellent for you to put in, for everybody's safety. So please consider this. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're pretty clear.
It was my pleasure to be so. You know, I've worked against electric...
Your time is up.
Well, there you go. See? Right on time.
All right. Is there a motion?
So I'll make the motion to, what is it, to adopt, I guess, the second reading?
With...
Referral.
With the referral to the Public Safety Commission. Actually, Steve, I think this is sort of around your thinking, maybe some time period that we ask that they report back after there's time to see kind of how the policy works, to whether there needs to be an adjustment, especially as to the passenger provision.
Two months, three months?
Three months, I was thinking.
I'll second the motion.
Now, let me ask our city attorney, do we have to, should we handle these separately? Do we have to pass the ordinance as this, or we can do it in that fashion? Okay.
You can do it together.
All right, we'll do that.
Then we, do we have to read the ordinance again? Or, okay, title. City clerk?
I will, I will read the ordinance. That was a motion by Councilmember Duncan, second by Councilmember Noblock, to adopt ordinance 1778, entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending San Clemente Municipal Code Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, adding Chapter 10.62, to establish regulations for the operation and use of electric bicycles and other forms of electric transportation, and finding the ordinance not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. In addition to adopting the ordinance, this is being referred back to the Public Safety Committee to report back in three months to determine whether or not, how the enforcement is going, and whether or not the second passenger is working. So, that was...
All right.
That was the motion, and you can go ahead and start your voting. Carrie's five oh.
All right. Any oral communications?
There's nothing for oral communications, part two. I'm sorry?
11E.
11E.
Sorry, I...
All right. I'm sorry about that. I forgot you pulled it off.
Yeah, I pulled it off after just hearing Mr. Streeter's comments. And, not that we need to change the ordinance or anything, but Mr. Manager, or Mr. Hall, do we have any idea of creating some sort of uniform policy of enforcement on those camping issues?
Yeah, we meet weekly, and we talk about a lot of these things, and it does evolve over time, and what's happening. Sometimes it can be weather-related, if we're going to have bad weather, or... So, we try to make sure that we are enforcing that across the board, in an equal way. Captain Christian does come to our meetings, as well as Mr. Otamian, who works with the park rangers. So we try to keep that consistent. And they try to work together. Sometimes, depending on what's happening, it's a sheriff action that's necessary. Other times, it's a ranger action that's necessary. So, yeah, there's a lot of coordination and collaboration that happens in that regard.
Yeah, just as long as everyone's on that same page, yeah.
Yeah. As far as enforcement, yes. In terms of the other things that were suggested, in terms of relocating them to this building and whatnot, we haven't received that direction, so we haven't had that discussion.
And we are waiting for the OCSD to actually come back with an enforcement policy after MV Boise, and they haven't quite come back with that yet. So, that should be imminent, but that will be helpful, also, in us kind of figuring out what our enforcement's going to be.
That's correct.
All right. Great. Thank you. With that, I will move the staff recommendation to adopt ordinance number 1779.
I'll second the motion when the clerk reads it.
I will read it. That is ordinance, adopt ordinance number 1779, entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, County of Orange, California, amending Chapters 8.86 and 12.18 of the San Clemente Municipal Code relating to public camping and public storage of personal property to address changes in law brought about by City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson at all, 144 SCs Court 2202, 2024, and finding the ordinance not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. That was a second by...
Mr. Noblock.
Noblock.
All right. I think we're ready to vote.
Our voting system is stalled out here, so we will just do...
Two voice vote?
I'm an aye.
I'll be an aye.
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 Carrie's five oh to adopt the ordinance.
All right.
Oral communications, part two. We're almost to the end. And I do not have any speaker cards.
All right, no oral communications?
Future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, and I'm not sure if this is a future agenda item, but I think maybe this is the best place to bring it up. I've talked about this with the city manager. As always, a lot of the best ideas come from the residents. We had a resident come in, I think it was the last meeting, and talk about these thistles on the hillsides. And I looked into it, and actually, I've been talking to a lot of residents, and they are very aware of this situation. But if you go down La Pata now, and you look at that hillside, Steve, where you were talking about where the amphitheater was going to be, it looks like a completely different hillside. It's completely covered with these things. They look like sort of small sunflower plants.
Artichokes almost.
They're almost like an artichoke looks. And that's what he called them, is artichoke thistles or something. I'm not sure what exactly they are, but they have completely taken over our hillsides. It's gone into talega. It's probably a fire risk. But I know this is an invasive species, that if you don't do something about it, it just kills all of the plant life that was there that is feeding the local ecosystem. And then, I think one of the things that he mentioned was, because the animal life isn't able to feed on the plants, the coyotes now come into our community to look for food. So it sort of rolls... So it sort of rolls into something worse. So I don't know if we need to take a motion or schedule it for a future agenda item, but I do think that this actually is quite important. Just if you walk around, especially in talega, you see these little white floaty little things, that's the thistle looking for a new place to grow. Just at Vista del Mar School in talega, I saw that there's a bunch of plants that I didn't notice before. So I think this is something we need to get immediately on, and I think we can consult with the OCFA about whether they know of any ways to tackle this. I don't know if we need to hire a contractor, or, yeah, a fire torch, or goats. We can get the goats that everybody loves. There's got to be a way to address this, because this isn't something that's particularly new. I mean, if you Google the thistles, all over California. But we've got it in our community now, and if we don't do something about it, I think we could have some really serious effects. And so is that something you think that I should get support for putting on in a future agenda item, or would you just like council direction to look at it?
I think it's a little bit more urgent than that. So I think what we'll do is we'll look into some possible solutions and bring something back to the next meeting. Thistles can get away from you very quickly, so we definitely want to bring something back and see what we can do to try to get ahead of this.
Yeah, I agree. The thistles are invasive. I think they started out on the ranch decades and decades and decades ago. Dick O'Neill used to tell the story of he and, then, before he was the mayor of San Ana, what was his name, Manuel Saluda, or I'm drawing...
Miguel Polito.
Miguel Polito. He and Miguel would go out there with a hoe, and they would go through the ranch area, literally hoeing these things up, because they spread like wild...
You have to, like, dig them out, yeah.
You have to dig them out. They're just absolutely terrible for the environment. And you're right, the Nob Hill, near where Mark and I live, it's covered with them, and it's just getting worse.
Yeah. I would only add to that, is that I know they've done that in some areas where you have to dig them out, but you also disturb the compactness of the soil, and that creates its own problem, too. So it's got to be the right solution. So we'll wait for you to come back. Next...
I've got a couple of things.
Oh, absolutely.
It's been a while since...
I think we're done already.
All right, we're past eight o'clock. It's been a while since I put anything on the agenda. Try to do things without agendizing them and maybe address them, but a couple of things is I've had contact by two different residents in the Maxburg Park area, and I know we closed off parking to, ostensibly for the RVs down there around Maxburg Park. And parking down there is an issue, and two different families that have young daughters that either work or go to school come home, and they have to park several blocks away and then hike back into their neighborhood. And I'm wondering if there's something we could look at to return parking around Maxburg Park, overnight parking, not for RVs, but for residential vehicles, and maybe even do something with a resident permit thing or something so we could kind of control. I know other communities do that, and I think it's becoming a safety issue now to let all that parking go, and the residents are having to, like I say, disperse a long ways away. So I'd like to get support.
I'll second that.
I'll third it for staff report.
Thank you so much. And the second thing is this free speech area at the Pier Bowl. I don't know what the legalities of, I know we have to have free speech, but I know a lot of communities also have designated free speech areas with amplified sound ordinances. And we used to have one before the farmer's market got, or they put all the, it was at the farmer's market down there first on Sundays, and then they moved it up to El Ranchito, but then the parklet took over that area, and so we don't really have a free speech area up there anymore that used to be designated for that. And so Pier Bowl, I think, is a great spot, but maybe we could do something that would kind of separate a little bit from the free speakers and the residents. And again, I know the sound control, the amplification, some of them have bull horns out there directional, and I'd like to see what maybe best practices are to other similar beach communities. Maybe Laguna, you know, has kind of a similar beach area as us, and maybe see if they're actually doing something.
There's another, a number of items, too, that were brought up earlier that relate to this, but it's a question of enforcement. I mean, the amplified sound...
The vendors.
The vendors, the artwork being sold. Maybe we take a look at all those...
Pier Bowl enforcement in general?
Plan of action, yeah, to address all those enforcement actions.
The winter would be a good time probably to do it. As we come up with the winter now, we have less issues, and maybe we can get some kind of control over it.
I think the free speech area might be addressed with the sound issue that was raised earlier, to have the rangers with the decibel meters. That might address both issues, but I think clearly ranger enforcement, or police enforcement of our current ordinances, noise ordinances and...
Vendor sellers.
Vendor seller. I mean, last month, we talked, a couple weeks ago, we talked about it, and we sort of said we need a two-month study or monitoring of the situation. But since that meeting, I've had a number of emails from people saying they're now down at, used to be Albertson's in the Pico Mall, now it's, what's it called? Palladium or whatever. Pavilion. They're now at Pavilion, and then there were strawberry guys down in another location. They're moving around town. So I think enforcement in that area is huge in all those areas.
Our direction on that, and the commitment, was that they were going to stand, follow, observe, and make sure that people weren't buying from them. So is that enough direction?
Yeah. We're kind of chasing them, but we're going to keep chasing them.
Keep chasing them.
I'll second that.
Give me a third for...
For a report?
Yes, I'll give you a third.
Thank you. I don't know how quickly, I mean, we want to give them time.
Yes, this isn't an urgent, urgent issue, but it needs to be addressed.
Yes, the city attorney and I have had discussions on that, and we will need an ordinance amendment, and we've been contemplating the best way to approach it, but, yeah, we'll get something to you quickly. It won't be, we won't drag our feet.
Yep. We're already up on the next meeting, so... All right. Anything else? All right, then we will entertain...
Actually, reports. We've got commission and committee reports. Any reports? Upcommittee updates?
Well, just on the OCFA stuff, since we have Shane here, thanks for joining us again. Actually, I think Shane was at the surf night. But, yeah, quick thing is the OCFA has expanded its social media, so now Shane is in charge. Who knew he was a whiz on social media? So Division III has its, oh, he's posting right now. Division III has its own Facebook and Instagram site, and we should get the word out to local residents, because a lot of good information from the fire authority comes out, that particular to our area and not just the whole county now. And so, yeah, I don't know how we can do that, but we can...
It's a mixed blessing, because you get all the bad stuff, too.
You don't want to know about, I guess. I think, yeah, I think actually there's a lot of good information that people sort of wonder about, right? And then they don't know where to go, and they would be able to get it, I think, at those accounts. So maybe we can get in touch with Miley and put that out on one of our city, our city communications, that people know that there's now our own division, social media sites.
Any other reports? The city attorney?
I have nothing to report, except it's a pleasure to serve the City of San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, there have been some discussions recently about items like the D-SAL plant, or some of these other expenses that the City Council probably needs to review in some sense of a, more of a cumulative review than project by project. So we'll be bringing back to you just basically some information to do some prioritization. A lot of these projects are very expensive. I just want to make sure that the City Council is seeing big picture totality of some of these things to make sure that we are using our resources as effectively as possible. And the other thing, as I was listening tonight, I think it's important that we bring to the City Council along with that, maybe a report on the cumulative impact of things like the fee waivers tonight. We set our fees to be cost recovery, and then we cut them in half. So the other half has to come from somewhere, and that's an impact on the general fund. Again, I'm not trying to throw a wet blanket. I understand why the council's doing what it's doing, but remember, our fees are calculated on that cost recovery, and when we don't do that, it's got to be made up from somewhere. So not a lecture, just, I think sometimes we don't see the cumulative impact, and so I will try to prepare something like that for the City Council. But I do have a couple of contracts I need to go through as well.
Andy doesn't like kids' soccer.
That's right.
No AYSO.
You got grandkids ready to play that, Andy.
Let's put it this way, I like balanced budgets more than soccer. But now, if you're talking football or baseball, we're going to have a different question. We're going to have a different conversation here. Go Padres. Okay, the contracts we have tonight, LGC Geotechnical, they were looking at the Colombo. I know that that's been a primary concern to residents in the council as well. They are doing a geotechnical investigation, the amount of $43,000. Fairbank Maslin, Maslin, Metz &amp; Associates for Research Survey, $36,000. CTO Consulting LLC.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Research and survey on what?
That was the survey for the Measure BB.
That's the one?
The community survey, the community survey for Measure BB.
It was done already.
Yeah, it's done.
What's this, the payment for it? Hasn't been...
Yeah, this is the...
This is a new contract?
No, this is finalizing the contract. This is not a new contract. This is the contract that was, that has already been completed.
We already got their information, all the survey results for our...
Oh, that was a condition preceding to your final payment?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Sorry, sometimes I go through these faster than I should. In fact, I will slow down. CTO Consulting LLC is an analysis of our financial resistance, resilience opportunities that is looking at the costs for keeping sand on the beach and other things with our coastal resiliency. The Galvin Preservation Associates Incorporated, First Amendment for Environmental Consulting Services for Hotel Clemente and Loretta's Restaurant, not to exceed $21,216. Another thing on that, for instance, maybe, in the future, maybe I'll be more complete on these, that is covered by development costs. So even though it's an expense to us, it's covered by development costs. So maybe in the future, I could do that, so we know which ones are actually costs to the city and which ones are actually reimbursed through applications. And I'll do that, I think I'll do that in the future, so...
All right.
One question. If we could go back to your first report on the water-related issues, the accumulation of fees and costs, when can we expect that report, and what items do you want in D-SAL? And what were the other items?
There's a water reuse right now, and then the poche, the poche issue. Those are three really big projects that in locality are big projects, and we want to make sure the City Council understands the cumulative...
And when do you think we could have that report?
I hope to do it at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right.